Oh, that's a great place. We were there two summers. It was really fun. I loved it. Yeah. Yeah, that's a cool place to visit.
The meeting for Akron City Council will come to order. Clerk will read the roll.
Freeman, Fusco, Hoke, Kammer, Keith, Kilby, Milkovich, Neal, Imobian, Samples, Sims, Somerville, Swirsky.
For those who voluntarily wish to do so, would you please stand as we are led in prayer by Reverend Sandy Rifele from Community of Christ Church. Immediately following our prayer, we'll be led in the Pledge of Allegiance. Going to ask if Councilman Neal can do that for us.
Lord, I thank you for all these that are assembled. As we have sat together, these are divine appointments among city council members and all of those who are civically minded. I thank you, Lord, that these have taken on the responsibility of this kind of leadership to look out for the welfare of this city, to take care of business, to work on improvements for the city of Akron, to work on the legislative branch, the government, the policymaking. I thank you, Lord, that you are here with each and every one as they work to faithfully go forward in all of their endeavors, in all of their planning. I thank you, Lord, that you are not only with them, but that you are leading and guiding them in all of these day-to-day and special affairs that come as they make policy, as they decide, as they carefully take in all of the resources, all of people's ideas, and weigh each and everything, as they're trying to make the best decisions. So I thank you, Lord, that you care enough about this city, that you are giving each of these wisdom and knowledge and understanding as they move forth in their responsibilities. In the Lord's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk will read the minutes from our previously held meeting.
Minutes from July 9, 2018's meeting. Council convened a regular session at 7:00 PM with President Fusco in the -- Vice President Fusco in the chair. All members were present except Somerville. Minutes of the previous regular meeting approved. Reading of petitions and communications. Passage of the consent agenda. Report of standing and special committees. Passage and referral of new ordinances and resolutions. Representation from various departments and divisions. Public speaking period. No further business on a motion by Swirsky. Council adjourned at 7:47 PM to reconvene a regular session on July 16 or a special call.
Any corrections or additions?
Motion to amend the minutes.
Whoa, whoa. Wait till your call on. Okay.
Point of order. Yes, Councilman Sims?
Request a motion to amend the minutes to reflect the approval of your absence last week.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman Sims. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
Okay.
Letters, petitions, and communications?
Correspondence from Fred Berry, President and CEO of Humility of Berry Housing regarding Second Chance Village.
File?
Notice of a new C-1, C-2 liquor permit to LL Drive-Thru LLC doing business as Lover's Lane Market, 1034 Lover's Lane, first floor only.
Special attention, Councilman Samples?
Notice of a new D-1 liquor permit to AVI Food Systems Incorporated at 175 East Exchange Street.
Special attention, Councilman Swirsky. You have before you the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One abstention? Before we move into our old business, we do have a special guest here with us who wants to make a presentation. We actually have Rochelle here from Habitat for Humanity.
Hi, all. Good evening. Following the remarks that I'm going to make this evening, I'll be set up in the conference room adjacent here with a beloved community banner for signatures, not only for members of council that were not able to attend the event, but also for anyone in the community who would like to take part and put their signature on a beloved community banner. So, thank you for giving me a couple of minutes this evening to speak. I am Rochelle Sibio. I'm the President and CEO of Habitat for Humanity in Summit County. And this past April 4th was the 50th anniversary of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s assassination. And Habitat for Humanity affiliates on that day across the country partnered with their local leaders and their community to kick off a year-long initiative around the beloved community. About 125 leaders attended a morning event that was held at the library, and we had some speeches and viewed some videos around Dr. Martin Luther King's beloved community speech, as well as the Seven Days to Fair Housing Initiative and what happened after his assassination. The King family back in December of 2017 had approached our Habitat International offices in Atlanta, asking for affiliates around the country to renew its pledge to build a world where everyone has a decent place to live. And building on that vision of Dr. King, the beloved community allows access, equality, and opportunity for all. The beloved community is fair, just, and built on the love of God operating in the human heart. So over this next year until Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday, January of 2019, we'll travel now around the community with our four beloved community banners, speaking to different groups, school boards, councils, mayors in different communities, township trustees and such, and asking them to join us in this pledge. So, I've been to county council most recently, and here tonight, I'm asking city council members that were not able to attend the event to please join and affix your signature around the beloved community. We'll be having a groundbreaking very shortly of our very first Habitat nine-house property build on East Avenue, land donated by Akron Children's Hospital. And that's our first beloved community initiative. We'll build nine homes there on that piece of property, and we'll be making some announcements of when that groundbreaking is coming up and certainly invite members of council to attend that. So, I appreciate you giving me a few minutes this evening to speak. I'll put the banner in the community conference room around the corner, and please join me after the meeting is over. Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much, Rochelle. We'll now move into our old business rules. Councilman Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee would like time.
Time will be granted. Planning, Councilman Fusco. We actually have three public hearings on tonight. And so we're going to ask if there's anyone here in the audience that is here to speak as regards to the biomedical district, or if you're here to speak about 54 Castle Boulevard or 1623 East Avenue. We're going to ask at this time if you'll please stand so that you can be sworn in by our law department.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, nothing but the truth? Say aye do. Thank you.
Okay. First public hearing. Legal notice. Notice hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Council of the City of Akron on Monday, July 16, 2018, during a regular council meeting at 7:00 PM, Council Chambers, 166 South High Street, upon an ordinance authorizing a text change regarding permitted uses within the biomedical use district.
Ms. Antonucci?
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. The biomedical use district was created in 2010 to encourage development of new biomedical uses, allowing only a narrow list of uses such as laboratories, medical device manufacturing, and biotech software development, along with specific development requirements. The biomedical use district encompasses two main areas, west of the main Suma Hospital campus, and southeast of the Akron Children's Hospital and Cleveland Clinic, Akron General Hospital campuses. It has been eight years since the creation of the biomedical use district and the biomedical incentive zone, and the planning staff believes that broadening the range of allowable uses within the district is logical. For example, Stark State College will open their campus on the eastern edge of the biomedical use district in the fall of 2018. The presence of Stark State College should encourage retail development, along with apartments around the campus to serve the needs of student and staff. Proposed text change will allow more flexibility for a mix of residential, office, retail, biomedical, and commercial uses within this district, and both planning commission and planning staff recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone here in the audience to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak against? Anyone here to speak against? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Fusco?
Yes, thank you, President. Somerville, I'd like to pull the committee for a favorable report with suspension of the rules. Imobian, Kammer, Neal, Swirsky.
Any objections? Seeing and hearing none, the rules have been suspended.
Yes, thank you. The committee has reviewed this proposal and discussed this afternoon. And basically what this is going to do is position us to be able to have more flexibility in terms of this downtown area, and recommend approval this evening on it.
Thank you. The rules have been suspended. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
Roll call and final passage. Freeman, Fusco, Hoke, Kammer, Keith, Kilby, Milkovich, Neal, Imobian, Samples, Sims, Somerville, Swirsky. Okay. Public hearing number two. Legal notice. It's hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Council of the City of Akron on Monday, July 16, during a regular council meeting at 7:00 PM, Council Chambers, 166 South High Street, upon an ordinance authorizing a conditional use to establish a daycare business at 545 Castle Boulevard.
Ms. Antonucci?
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. Latana Slaton-Golden is requesting permission to establish a child daycare business center at this location. The proposed daycare business center, Soaring Little Eagles Daycare, would occupy the downstairs portion of the 1,344 square feet split-level dwelling. Care would be provided for a maximum of 12 children with a separate room each for the care of infants, toddlers, and school-aged children. No changes are proposed to the interior or the exterior of the house. Besides the petitioners, another person will assist with the curriculum. This property is well-maintained, and the zoning staff has not received any complaints about the current daycare center. Planning staff is the opinion that providing care at various times and varying ages for up to a maximum of 12 children should not have a detrimental effect on the nearby homes. Providing quality daycare service is beneficial to the entire city. Both planning commission and planning staff recommend approval, subject to the conditions.
Thank you. Is there anyone here in the audience to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anyone here to speak in favor? Yeah, we're just going to ask that you approach the podium if you'll give us your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Latana Slaton-Golden. I reside at 545 Castle Boulevard.
And did you want to share?
Well, basically, I opened up a daycare type B home in April of 2018, and what I found is that families are coming to me readily to ask for childcare, and I'm not able to assist them because of the capacity of only six kids that is allowed. So I do have enough space. It's a very secured house. We've done a lot of work to it, just to ensure that the kids are safe. My husband is involved. I have workers two in the morning, two in the afternoon. It is a 24-hour service. However, I am not serving 24 hours. It's just up from 6:30 till like 11 o'clock at night, just depending on what services are, you know, with, excuse me, with families that is needed. So, we are, you know, we have all the credentials that's warranted by the county and the state as well. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in the audience to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak against? Anyone here to speak against? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco?
Yes, thank you, President. Somerville, I'd like to pull the committee for a favorable report with suspension of the rules. Imobian, Kammer, Neal, Swirsky.
Aye.
Any objections? Seeing and hearing none, the rules have been suspended.
Yes, thank you. After review this afternoon of the proposed conditional use request and the petitioner agreeing to the various conditions based on that, as well as the planning department, the commission, I believe, and the ward council person, they're all in favor of this. We recommend approval this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. The rules have been suspended. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
Roll call and final passage. Freeman, Fusco, Hoke, Kammer, Keith, Kilby, Milkovich, Neal, Imobian, Samples, Sims, Somerville, Swirsky. Public hearing number three. Legal notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Council of the City of Akron on Monday, July 16, 2018, during a regular council meeting at 7:00 PM in Council Chambers, 166 South High Street, upon an ordinance authorizing conditional use to construct a storage building for used tires at 1623 East Avenue.
Ms. Antonucci?
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. Jose Felix is proposing to construct a tire storage building on the eastern portion of this property. The building will measure 30 feet by 50 feet for a total of 1,500 square feet of area. Construction materials will consist of decorative split-faced block, steel siding, and an asphalt shingled roof. Petitioner stated that he needs a storage building to store tires instead of having them stored outside. He also plans on removing the existing building, including refacing, or renovating the existing building, including refacing the front facade with stone. Proposed building will bring this property into compliance with the zoning code. Although a dense row of shrubbery exists along the east property line, a solid wooden fence should be installed to further shield any activity from the neighboring residential uses. Planning staff is of the opinion that the proposed tire storage building will be an improvement over the current conditions without intruding upon the neighboring residential properties, and subject to the installation of fencing and landscaping. Both planning commission and planning staff recommend approval, subject to conditions.
Thank you. Is there anyone here in the audience to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anyone here to speak in favor?
Yes, my name, Richard Burrows, 275 North Hawkins. I'm in support of Mr. Felix. He a little shy, but he's planning on fixing up, beautifying that corner. He's gonna build a brand-new pole barn building, and he gonna paint and put stone on existing building. Take him, Mr. Felix, stand up.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that wants to speak in favor? Is there anyone here that wants to speak against? Anyone here that wants to speak against? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, we'll close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco?
Thank you, President. Somerville, I'd like to pull the committee for a favorable report with suspension of the rules. Imobian, Kammer, Neal, Swirsky.
Aye.
Any objections? Seeing and hearing none, the rules have been suspended.
Yes, thank you. There's 16 conditions that are placed on this particular conditional use request. I know the ward council representative is in favor of this, as well as the planning department and the commission, and this will beautify that corner that could use this new development, so we recommend approval this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. So, the rules have been suspended. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
Roll call and final passage. Freeman, Fusco, Hoke, Kammer, Keith, Kilby, Milkovich, Neal, Imobian, Samples, Sims, Somerville, Swirsky.
Councilman Fusco?
Yes, thank you, President. Somerville, the report of the committee on item number four is favorable, and we ask for suspension of the rules. Yes, thank you. This is the diagonal road property known, also known as 630 and 642 Diagonal Road. This is the sale of 6.8 acres at that site to BR Kenez Construction Incorporated for a price of $206,000. Today, a number of us went up to the Cleveland area and viewed, there's a proposal for this particular site to place housing, and so after review of that, the properties that have been developed by this developer, we recommend approval this evening.
Okay, very good. The committee's report is favorable. The rules have been suspended. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Any oppose? Let me have one abstention. Councilman Fusco?
Item number five, consent agenda.
Okay, item number five will be placed on the consent agenda.
Time on six, seven.
Time will be granted on six and seven.
Report of the committee on eight is consent agenda.
Item number eight will be placed on the consent agenda.
Yes, thank you, President. Somerville. Item number nine, the report of the committee is for suspension of the rules with a favorable report.
Did you have any comment, Councilman Fusco?
Yes, yes, I did. This is the conditional use on, again, the property that we had just voted on to sell to Kenez. This represents 51 new housing units in the city of Akron. The density is a little unfamiliar with us here in Akron, but this is the trend, more and more, and what we learned today was that this is the trend, this is one of the reasons why people are moving into urban centers and into the city, back into the cities. They want to live closer together. They want to be able to have a, get to know their neighbors, and there's a number of other myriad of reasons that, why, but what we're seeing is a higher density per acre, and it's successful. We see this in the Cleveland area, the Lakewood area, where we visited today, and so with that, we recommend approval this evening. It's additionally, what I'd like to also mention is, is that these communities are much more walkable, which is a marketing aspect of these properties as well.
Thank you so much. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? And one abstention. The ayes have it. Councilman Fusco?
Report of the committee is to file item number 10.
Item number 10 will be filed.
Time on 11.
Time on 11.
And file 12 and 13.
12 and 13 will be filed.
And time on the balance.
Time will be granted. Public service, Councilman Keith?
What's the order agenda?
Sorry. Time. Thank you.
Okay, time will be granted. We will now move into our new legislation. Budget and finance.
Okay, item number one offered by Freeman. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept a grant award for the Akron Peacemakers Project funded through the U.S. Conference of Mayors dollar-wide, Mayors for Financial Litocracy Initiative, authorizing expenditure fund on identified programs to promote financial literacy and declaring emergency.
Councilman Freeman?
Committee's request that this item be placed on the consent agenda.
This item will be placed on the consent agenda.
Item number two offered by Freeman. Ordinance authorizing the purchasing agent to enter into a contract without the formality of advertising for bids for backup software for the citywide data center from Softwarehouse International Corporation and declaring an emergency.
Councilman Freeman?
Committee's request that this item be placed on the consent agenda.
This item will be placed on the consent agenda.
Okay. Item 2A offered by Freeman. Ordinance authorizing issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $2 million for the purpose of acquiring a perpetual easement in the building known as the Lock for Arcade within the Bowery Development in favorance of economic development purposes of the city and declaring emergency.
Councilman Freeman?
Committee would like to refer this item, and for everyone's information, we will be hearing a presentation from the administration next week. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This item will be referred.
Okay. Item number three, this is a substitute offered as an amendment. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Let me see that. Okay. You're right. Okay. Sorry about confusion. Item number four offered by Fusco. Ordinance accepting a vacation plat for a portion of Pine Alley and declaring an emergency, and Somerville's name is also on that.
Councilman Fusco?
Yes, thank you. The report of the committee before was consent agenda, so we recommend consent agenda on this item. Thank you.
Okay. This item will be placed on the consent agenda.
Item number five offered by Fusco. Ordinance approving the sale of city-owned land located at 132 Willard Avenue, filing that the land is not needed for public use and declaring an emergency.
Councilman Fusco?
Consent agenda.
This item will be placed on the consent agenda.
Item number six offered by--
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Milkovich?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session, please.
And, Councilman Milkovich, if you can, you'll have to state the reason on the floor for the purpose.
I'd like to get a little bit more information about this development, please.
Okay. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I think executive session is confined to items, personnel issues, whatnot. I'd like a ruling--
And before you proceed, what we're going to do is we're going to look to our law department, and we'll get advice from them, okay? Thank you. Six. You already did.
Already did five.
Okay. Councilman Milkovich?
Madam President, I'd like to change my motion to go, to a motion to go into executive session over a personal issue. Personnel.
Personnel issue. Do we have a second? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any oppose?
No.
Roll call?
Okay, roll call. Freeman? Fusco? Hope? Kammer? Key? Kilby? Milkovich? Samples? Neal? Mobian? Sims? Somerville?
Aye.
Swirsky?
No.
That vote was eight yeses and five noes.
Okay, we will now convene to executive session.
Can we get a motion to come out of executive order session?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay, the ayes have it.
Okay. Item number six. Offered by Mayor Horrigan, President Somerville, Councilman Fusco and Freeman. Ordinants declaring improvements to certain parcels of real property to be a public purpose, requiring the owners of the improvement thereon to make service payments in lieu of taxes. Establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments and related authorization pursuant to sections fifty-seven oh nine point four oh, fifty-seven oh nine point four two, and fifty-seven oh nine point four three of the Ohio Revised Code, authorizing the execution and delivery of a redevelopment and tax increment financing agreement with Akron Roman Road LLC, a Delaware Limited Liability Company, authorizing the execution and delivery of the purchase and sale contract with the developer to sell certain real property owned by the city, finding that said property is not needed for public use and declaring emergency.
Councilman Fusco?
Thank you, President Somerville, for your request of the committees for suspension of the rules with a favorable report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. This here particular ordinance calls for sale, TIF, redevelopment of what's formerly known as the Rolling Acres site. In our charter here in the city of Akron, we have a strong mayoral form of government. Mayor Horrigan and his team, James Hardy and Mr. Segarty, have worked to put us in a position to successfully market this land. Calling for five hundred, up to five hundred jobs, six hundred thousand square feet of new construction here in our city, and the possibility of generating thirty million in payroll, new payroll, here in the city of Akron. We're in a competition. We're in a competition locally, regionally, globally. The business community is watching. We should act quickly, as this same council did in two thousand twelve, whenever a German company was looking to locate in the United States. In two thousand twelve, this council passed an ordinance the day it was introduced. This was with the promise of one hundred and fifteen jobs. That company since two thousand twelve has expanded twice and is looking toward the end of this year to possibly have up to two hundred and seventy-five jobs here in our city. Again, Mayor Horrigan and his staff has put us in a great position in terms of this potential development. We are in a competition. Let's demonstrate, demonstrate that we have the agility to move quickly. Developers and the business people often measure communities on what can be delivered and how quickly it can be done. The reputation of a community is measured on moments like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we're going, Councilman Milkovich?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam President, I rise in opposition to this ordinance and my good conscience, I cannot vote for an ordinance that I don't know who the developer is, or the building that will be put in there, what kind of jobs they're gonna have, in selling to people's land at a discounted rate of ten thousand dollars. In my business, Acumen, that is not good business sense. The people have a right to know. It is their land, it's the people's land. Who is this developer? What kind of jobs are gonna be coming? Let's do the people's business, not behind closed doors, but in the open. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Freeman?
I just, in the midst of all this, I just wanted to say, this is the week of, I think this is the week of the All-Star game, baseball, am I right? And we're gonna have something called the Home Run Derby, and we've run, we've won the Home Run Derby this week. This one has gone out of the park. This one is one that is going to provide five hundred plus jobs. I've been down here for seventeen years. I've never, ever seen anything like this. Knowing and having relationship with the administration, with the development staff, I trust this agreement. And I'll say this finally in closing. Over in the Ninth Ward, we have several events throughout the year where there's people that come in for free groceries, there's people that will come in for a dinner, and I've talked with some of those folks. Those folks need these jobs and need these benefits, and so I would just, without, without any malice or anything whatsoever, I would ask that we pass this this evening, we let these jobs come to the forefront, and for just a few moments, we allow Akron to be the envy of a lot of mid-sized cities across the country. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Horrigan?
Thank you. It actually wasn't a discounted rate, we don't have much in it, and we're actually getting more for the demolition. I, I think we all come down here for certain reasons, and maybe even have an agenda, and I can certainly respect the opinions, and although I, you know, I've argued many times with many of you, and I, but I respect your opinion, I really do. We don't agree on it, there are very few days in the last three years where you will be able to celebrate something, I think, this significant and this big, and even in this business, when you can do something like that, you really have a chance to not only hit it over the fence, but you have a chance to really hit it out of the park. I, I think during committee today, we talked about the types of jobs that are there, these are fitting with the zoning and the commercial type of endeavor that has always been up there, and what it's going to add to not just the Ninth Ward and the Roman Road corridor. This is for all of them, and these are, these are very solid paying jobs that do have healthcare, that we've had complaints about with companies that are cutting those back, and they do have tuition reimbursement. You, you really do have a chance to send a signal and be the envy of other communities to say, you know what, we're gonna do this, and I cannot count how many complaints that all of you have talked to me about, what are we gonna do about Rolling Acres? Well, I had this conversation two and a half years ago, to start this conversation about what are we gonna do with Rolling Acres? And I've talked about jobs per acre, and not to, not to worry, we're at a minimum of about eight and the maximum about twenty-four. That's a significant impact into the community and what it could, what it can mean for all of us, so I urge you to pass this legislation tonight. It is significant for the community, it is significant for you and for all of us, and I appreciate your time and your consideration. Madam President.
Thank you. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any oppose? Roll call.
Roll call and final passage. Freeman. Fusco. Hoke. Kammer. Keith. Kilby. Milkovich. Bosley Samples. Neal. Robian. Sims. Somerville.
Aye.
Swirsky.
Aye.
Legislation passes twelve to one. Item number seven. Offered by Keith. Ordinants levying special assessments for the improvement of Kingswood Drive between the termini of Meriman Road and Rocky Hollow Drive, and Rocky Hollow Drive between the termini of Kingswood Drive and Rocky Ridge Drive by paving, grading, constructing, reconstructing curbs, concrete sidewalks, driveway approaches, storm sewers, water mazes, installing roof drain pipes, and planting trees, and altogether with the necessary appurtenances and declaring emergency.
Councilman Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee would like this to be placed on the consent agenda.
This item will be placed on the consent agenda.
Item number eight offered by Keith. Ordinants levying special assessments for the improvement of Wilberth Road between the termini of Dallas Avenue and Interstate seventy-seven by paving, grading, constructing, and reconstructing curbs, concrete sidewalks, driveway approaches, storm sewers, water mazes, installing roof drain pipes, planting trees, altogether with the necessary appurtenances and declaring emergency.
Councilman Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee would also like this one to be placed on the consent agenda.
This item will be placed on the consent agenda.
Okay, item number nine offered by Keith. Ordinants authorizing the mayor or his designated to file an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency for clean air grant funding through the State of Ohio Diesel Mitigation Trust Fund Program, authorizing local match requirements for the same and declaring emergency.
Councilman Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee's report is favorable and we are requesting suspension of the rules.
Any objections? Seeing and hearing none, the rules have been suspended.
A while back Volkswagen made a huge mistake and wasn't honest about their emissions that they had in their vehicles, and so a trust was created when they were penalized. This trust is being divvied out to different communities. We would like our fair share, and so we are asking for permission just to enter into the grant funding process with a match on our behalf.
Thank you. The rules have been suspended, the committee's report is favorable, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any oppose? The ayes have it.
Roll call and final passage. Freeman, Fusco, Hoke, Kammer, Keith, Kilby, Milkovich, Neal, Robian, Samples, Sam, Somerville, Swirsky. Item number eleven offered by Mayor Horrigan. Ordinants authorizing the mayor or his designated to enter into agreements with various political subdivisions.
Mr. Keith, point of order, you skipped number ten.
Okay. Item number ten, I'm sorry. Offered by Sample. Ordinants authorizing director of public service or his designated after publicly advertising forbids to enter into a contract or contracts to construct, construct the Eckert Ditch Water Quality Improvements and declaring emergency.
Councilman Samples?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Consent please.
This item will be placed on the consent agenda.
Okay. Item number eleven. Let me read it again. Ordinants authorizing the mayor or his designated to enter into agreements with various political subdivisions in the County Summit for the provision of prosecutorial services and declaring emergency.
Councilman Kammer?
Thank you. Committee's report is to place this item on consent agenda, please.
This item will be placed on the consent agenda.
Okay, that's it.
We will now move to the portion of our meeting that we refer to as our public comment period. If you wish to speak to this council during this time, we're gonna ask that you please approach the podium, that you please sign in, you state your full name, spell your last name, and give us your address. You will have three minutes to speak to this body, speakers are reminded that this is an official meeting. Remarks should be kept respectful and germane to council business. Speakers should refrain from making any personal attacks. Anyone who breaches decorum will be ruled out of order and may be removed from council chambers.
Madam Chairperson and members of the council, my name is John Beatty, B.E.A.T.Y., at twenty forty-seven Wyndham Road. I come tonight with several suggestions. First of all, how to save money for the city. Establish a no idling policy for police and fire vehicles, service vehicles, construction equipment, dump trucks, snow plowing, and so forth. I have seen myself an empty police car idling for hours in front of a home. I've seen city trucks idling to keep the driver warm while the poor Joe's doing the work down in the mud hole, freezing their behinds off without the benefit of heating in the truck. We could save maybe even millions of dollars just to establish- We could save maybe even millions of dollars just to establish a no-idling policy. A second suggestion, driving city vehicles on city business only. No driving to grocery store or parking at home. Leave all city vehicles in safely secured city lots when off duty. Three, solar panels on city buildings. The time is ticking toward unrecoverable climate catastrophe. Solar panels save money and can help save the planet from fossil fuel pollution. Four, paint with the help of Akron U Polymer Research. All city parking lots white with perhaps blue striping or some other color. It reflects heat back into the atmosphere instead of being a heat city. Five, eventually paint city streets white. I believe some cities in California are doing this. Again, it reflects the heat back into the atmosphere. Roof all city buildings with light-colored roofing or with garden roofs. And there are a number of private and church buildings that have white roofs. One is Redeemer United Methodist Church in North Hill. Consider fuel efficiency when purchasing city vehicles, like maybe Priuses for some vehicles. Use creative ways to involve Akron citizens in duties such as painting fire plugs and street signs, posts. Speaking of street sign posts, my friends here that I recently met who have come down here for relief for Bailey Court, I would suggest that maybe we could start by putting a Bailey Court sign up there. I couldn't find the street. I could not find the street because there's no street sign there. And that could be a problem if a fire truck is trying to put out a fire up on that street and can't even find the street. Just a suggestion, a beginning for improving that.
You have about 10 seconds, mister.
Okay. I think that'll be it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reverend Beatty.
Gotta run.
Good evening. My name is Renee Witzbaler and I reside at 1 Canal Square Plaza in Akron, Ohio. I recently moved to Akron eight months ago, re-moved after being gone for 13 years. And the recent activities that's happened over the last couple of months with the shootings and killings, we know CNN will not be there, we know MSNBC will not be there, but we are here. And a lot of, I've read some of the comments over the mayor's conference video and it's a lot of fingers being pointed at everybody. But there's a lot of situations that's going on. It's not just a black crime. It's not just a white crime. It's a community. It's our city. And I believe that we all need to play a role in that because there's so many things that's going on. It's not just parents, but also we have, a majority of our youth is being raised by grandparents and great-grandparents and foster care and being aged out of it. There's a lot of things that we need to do. We need to come up with some solutions. And as a community and City of Akron resident, I am here. I'm available to come with solutions to the problems that we face in saving our youth and saving our families here in the City of Akron. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Baylor.
Hi, um, excuse me. My name is Fannette Morris and I am a longtime resident of Akron, Ohio. I moved away two years ago and I have been living in Atlanta for 14 years. Coming back here, the Copley Road area is heartbreaking. It's like, I, you know, I've seen areas change, but nothing like the West Side. So, between Delia and V. Oden Boulevard, I don't know what has went on and what is happening over there, but my heart breaks for homeowners and elderly that have nowhere else to go. This is their community. They were born and raised here. They've had their homes here. And the city is just running amok. And as a resident now, I wanna help. I don't wanna be somebody on Facebook praying and that's not gonna solve anything. At this point, Ward 3, 4, I think it's 5, I wanna be of assistance. And everybody that come to my salon, that's all we're talking about. We don't wanna just talk and be on Facebook and going to all these funerals and things. Like, it's gotta be a solution, but we don't have no answers. You know, we, we voted people in. I thank God that I finally got my license and I'm Ohio resident now and I can actually vote. But it's time for the old to do, something has to change. You know, we just can't keep seeing the same old thing. And we can't keep talking about the same old thing. At this point, people want change. And you guys have a lot of people out here that's willing to help, but they don't have no answers. And they don't know who to look to for leadership. So, I'm here today saying that I'm available. I put my number here, my address here, everything that you need. My business is on the West Side of Akron, on Exchange Street, and I live right on Dover Avenue. So, I'm right there in the middle. It's just absolutely sickening what is going on on the West Side. And guess what, guys? It's not gonna just stay in one area. You know, if we don't fix it, you know, where you call safe and home, it's coming your way. And so, it's not just our problem, it's everybody's problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Morris.
Greetings, Akron. Steve Mohammed on deck again. I really came out today to say thank you to all of those members who came out to our event. And that was gonna be it. I was gonna say thank you and then get out of here. But I got inspired while sitting in the seat and listening to the business from tonight because as we have heard from our previous two speakers, we don't just have a situation or an emergency going on. This is a crisis right now. And it's my sons who are at risk the most. And that includes me. And when Gino Tony puts an event together on conflict resolution, changing the culture one round at a time, boxing for peace, if you were there that Saturday, you saw, and I wanna thank those members of the city council that came, those members from the mayor's office who came, because I think that if you saw what I saw, you saw what some solutions look like. It's not just one answer to this. If these guns were anywhere else, there would be resources released to stop the bleeding. That I believe in my body and my core. If this was anybody else's community being disaffected in the broad daylight with ill regard for people's safety, that's a threat to the entire city. Akron can't be an all-American city with those kinds of conditions that exist. So, we celebrate the things that we celebrate, but in my opinion, you won't be able to attract business here. People don't wanna move here because that is an eyesore. That is a major threat when bullets can start flying at any given moment, any time of the day. I just don't believe that that, these guns could be coming in. If I have my ear to the ground and hear murmuring about where the guns are being sold, then I know, and that's with my limited intelligence, then I know if the right resources are placed in the right places, this can end tonight. So, when Gino Tony gets up and does his thing, and he's a prime example of how you go from one extreme to another and change your life around with help and support from an entire community, I think that's a worthy investment to say, okay, if that's a model, we can build on that. That's what I believe. That's the big victory. That would send shockwaves across the country. What is Akron doing? How did they get that kind of return for a small investment? You already have community groups on the ground who are doing a lot of the heavy lifting that I think need more support. That's all I really came to say. And hopefully, that discussion will increase. And we'll be continuing our work and our effort to mitigate some of these, these, these concerns and speak to our young folks who will listen. Thanks.
Thank you, Reverend Mohammed.
Hello, my name is Lakeisha Neal. I reside at 871 Sheridan Street. If I would've known, I wanna apologize, 'cause if I would've known that that 1632 or the East Avenue business that you guys voted on was right in my neighborhood, I would've voted against it. That's not what I came down here for, but I came up on that. That tire place, that, what needs to be on that corner is just a pure lot because right next to it is Wonder World, which is a beautiful lot. And if we have another tire place, that's what, which is another car, abandoned car place or something across the street from it, is an eyesore. So, what we need in that area, that's next to Bob's Hamburg, I believe that's where that's at, is just a nice beautified area to bring harmony in that area right above Spring Hill, which we are talking about today. I believe that will bring beauty to that community. But what I really came here for was, for my house, I have this program that I took advantage of, the exterior water service line coverage. Well, it's a wonderful program and I thought I would take advantage of it because as a homeowner, you wanna, and my house was built in 1919, you wanna take advantage of those things. So, little do I know something was gonna happen. The water line that I took, took advantage of, I did get that coverage for the warranty. However, they also offered the sewer drain coverage, which was not on this paper, and I said, give me that too. So, when something happened, they came out, but they denied me twice. And the reputable business, Mays and Sons Company are reputable from Cleveland, from which this program came from, I guess from Cleveland. He was telling me the history about this program. He, he came from that, so he's very well-known. And he said that the cut, the pipe, the way my pipe is going into the sewer is a part of the sewer. I guess the way it was built back then is a part of the main sewer line, but they're denying me and they denied me twice. And I'm paying for this. This is something that's coming out of my bank account every month. And they deny me twice. I need some help because my drain is open in my driveway. So, I'm just, I just need to know how to move forward.
Mrs. Neal, after the meeting, if you will get with Mr. John Moore?
Okay.
And he'll, he'll assist you, okay?
Okay, thank you so much. Drop on my name.
Last year around this time, my name is Minister James Hill. Last year around this time, I was a resident.
Mr. Hill, can you just give us your address, Mr. Hill?
1455 White Avenue.
Okay.
Last year around this time, I was a resident at Spring Hill, okay? And I had a firsthand view of what goes on there. They need a lot of assistance. They need a lot of help, okay? Last year, UKYC did a story with me. I went through a leadership program and put together the first Spring Hill Awareness Day, which was August the 5th of last year. It was very, very well put together and was well-done. And the people got something that they'd never gotten before, hope. Not to mention LeBron James got his start there. He's not the greatest basketball player in the NBA. And also, I'm sure we know, the Cleveland Browns went 0-16 and we did not give up on them. There are probably some Cleveland Brown fans in the room right now. What I would say, let's not give up on Spring Hill, okay? Let's not give up. Please, let's not give up. They simply need help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
My name is Kwanda Eason. I live at 744 Moon Street. And I come today complaining about groundhogs. I call down here, oh, call the wildlife. Who am I? I'm just the person telling someone we're infested with groundhogs. I think that the city should call the Wild Humane Society or whatever they are to come out and start somewhere with these groundhogs. They're destroying people's property. I've got two people that have already moved out of my neighborhood dealing with groundhogs. Scared to come out your door 'cause the groundhog might be there. Second of all, there's two youths that keep going into an abandoned house and one is on papers and they go down there into the vacant house. And I don't know if anybody policing these vacant houses from the city. I don't know. I hope nothing happens to them. Second of all, something's wrong with the water 'cause it smells. And I don't know if y'all aware of it in my neighborhood, but there's a problem with that. Third of all, about the killings and all that kinda stuff, there is rules. I don't know that my mama made them up, but we sure did follow them. We were home by 11 o'clock and I didn't know that a young man was out there at 11:30 at 15, 13-years-old. And there is small rules that these young kids need to follow. And they probably don't know 'cause they're young parents raising children what the rules are with, with raising kids. Now, my kids was home at 11. If they weren't, they were punished. But there are rules. I don't know, are they sitting there with dust on them? But I was born in 1958 and I'm still on that rule for myself. So, if you can go back and get some of them and put them into reporters and all this kinda stuff, these young women, men, they don't know. We used to get picked up if we was out a certain time at night. So, I'm just saying, get the old rules and enforce them. These young people that are having children, they don't have no idea, this generation, what, 1980 babies? Something like that, 80 babies. So, I think that that's something to look into. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Eason. Is there anyone else wishing to speak during our public comment period? Seeing and hearing none, we will close our public comment period and move into our committee assignments, rules. Councilman Keith?
To apply.
Budget and finance, Councilman Freeman.
Free access.
Planning, Councilman Fusco.
Public service.
Councilman Keith?
No problem.
Public utilities, Councilman Samples. Public safety, Councilman Kammer. Parks and Rec, Councilman Neal. Housing, Councilman Kilby. Health and social services. Economic development, Councilman Sims. Green committee, Councilman Swirsky.
1 o'clock.
Just to all council members, just as a reminder, we want to remind you on this Thursday, July 19th, from 4 to 6:30, we will have a joint meeting with our Akron School Board at Central Howard, so if you can, put that on your calendars. I just did wanna say something. I know Mr. Hill mentioned something about not wanting to forget about Spring Hill, and I think this is a great opportunity to bring it up. And I wanna thank my colleagues for making this happen. We've invested quite a lot into Spring Hill, $11 million project, the state-of-the-art cameras. And because of those cameras that this body had approved and voted upon, that killer, they've got his face. They know what he looks like. And so, we're just thankful for that. You know, we hate that crime is happening in our cities, but we're glad that we have provisions there to be able to solve some of these crimes. So, I just wanted to let you know that. Also, wanna give an opportunity to any of my council members to bring forth anything else coming before council. Councilman Samples?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I first want to rise and thank our chief and the mayor for their press conference today. I think it was much needed. We've had an influx in crime here in the City of Akron from the 4th of July, and it almost seems like every single day, there's been a shooting. There's been someone who has died. One of those individuals, I knew personally, went to church with them, know their family. So, I mean, when you start thinking about the cause and effect, when you're starting to shoot, when there's babies in a car with someone, we have entered into a different kind of community here in Akron. When you think about the numbers, as of today, over 60,521 people have been shot in some shape or form, whether death or incident or unintentional in the United States. That doesn't even commit, even address the 22,000 who have died by suicide by gun. And those are just the ones that have been reported. These are, there's so many that are not being reported. But when we talk about here, right here at home, it concerns me greatly because I've been on council a little under five years and I can say I don't recall ever seeing the violence that is going on in our community right now. A lot of people are pointing fingers and want people to blame, but the blame is not gonna stop violence.
That's right.
We can blame people all day long and it's not stopping the violence. I would like to charge our community, as my colleagues, my pastors, and community activists, and those who wanna help here in the community. It is- It is time that we take our neighborhoods back. These kids are running our neighborhoods. Parents are afraid of them, kids are out past the time they're supposed to be out, days have passed when they haven't even seen their kids. And I'm not going to say I'm blaming somebody because they're young, I'm not. I was a mom at sixteen, had two by the time I was seventeen, had all my kids by the time I was twenty-three. Wasn't until they got grown, they decided to make their own decisions. They sure weren't now, afternoon eleven o'clock at night at thirteen. But again, how do we know that parent might have to work to pay bills? So now we have the community and the streets raising our babies. So we not only have to do something about the violence, we have to do something to make sure that our kids are in safe spaces and have safe places to go, because parents have to work. People have to work. How do they take care of their kids if they're not working? They have to work two and three jobs now just to survive. And so, you know, I think it's time, we as a community have to be that change in that neighborhood. We can't wait for somebody else to do it for us. We can't. We need to be out there knocking on doors, and prayer is good, but prayer is not everything. You know, everybody wants to put up, pray for Akron, pray for Akron. What else are we going to do besides pray? We're praying, and our kids are still out here walking around with backpacks with guns in them. And people are afraid to even say anything to them because they're afraid the kids are going to pull a gun out on them, it happens. But our kids are not the adults we are. And we have to do something about it, and we have to do something now. We can't continue to talk about it, we can't have another darn town hall meeting, town hall meetings are not working. We have to do something in those neighborhoods. I'm from the neighborhood, proud of it, never run from it, my parents still live in the neighborhood I grew up in. And I go over there and I talk to those kids who know me, and all you got to do is develop a relationship with them, and they will tell you everything you need to know, everything. There's so much more going on in this city, it almost frightens me for my grandchildren. But it doesn't mean we can't fix it, doesn't mean we can't change it. But we have to change it going into the neighborhood, talking to people and knocking on doors, not sitting, having committee meetings, having dialogues, having town hall meetings, that's not going to fix it. We need to show up in those neighborhoods and fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Samples. Councilwoman Sims?
Actually, I don't really need to emphasize what my colleague had to say, I'd like to say thank you. I too wanted to rise and acknowledge the administration's efforts today. Unlikes, I believe in the power of prayer. I'm actually a testament, that is why I'm here, so I know that it has its place. But it's really about having the moral courage to stand even when sitting is so much more comfortable. So I thank everybody who came out today. But this is about all hands on deck, all hands on deck. But we don't get to choose whose hands are on deck. You can't say the hands is too big, or the hands is too small, or you've been in trouble before. This is really about really all hands on deck. And so that's the work that we have to continue to do, to engage people that we may be uncomfortable with, but they know a little more intel than we do. To talk to people who may be more affluent than you are, because they have the resources to help us where we need help. We can't discount anybody. So again, I say and concur with my colleague, again, thanking the mayor and administration for the press conferences today, but we have work to do, and there's no time for retreating, for sure. So I'm glad you guys showed up here. I want you to know I do believe in prayer, I believe in this ability to go places that we can't. I know it can penetrate walls when I can't, but I know we still have to be listening for some answers and be willing to put our hands to the plow to do the work. So again, thank you for coming down, and again, thank you, mayor and administration for the press conference.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sims. Anything else coming before council? Councilwoman Neal?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I agree with my colleagues here, I appreciate those who came down. I want to let you know that this council has tried to put things forth. We are a legislative body. We put together the rules, we approve the budgets, but we don't administer the things. This is going to take work between the community and between the administration to fix this. And it all boils down to resources. This council merged its health department with the county, there was supposed to be a savings of a million dollars. We've tried to determine, since we know that gun violence is a health issue, how can we redirect the million dollar savings that we had? It has been a struggle trying to do that. We passed legislation to put our budget online so that when we make these difficult decisions, because if we take money from one area, it's going to reduce what we have in other areas. But we need your input to make those decisions. I'm asking for the administration's help since we passed the legislation. Fund that project, eighty-five hundred dollars. When we stand on this floor and we make the comment about spending a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year to paint fire hydrants, when we know that we can do that for less than twenty thousand, and it's not funny, Mr. Hope, because we got children dying and we're not putting any resources. Maybe if this was an opiate epidemic, we'd be able to find a hundred and thirty-five million dollars for the region. But it's a gun violence issue. We've been talking about this in these chambers for years, for years. The city of Barbados created a, what they call, a neighborhood first initiative vehicle. This vehicle was created and designed to deliver government and social services, whether they are medical, financial, educational, or recreational to the neighborhoods. Do you know that this council passed legislation for a mobile neighborhood resource center five years ago? Five years ago? And that's when we had the killings that took place at Chapel Hill and in West Akron. This council took leadership and passed it. Where's our mobile resource center? Less than thirty thousand dollars. We're spending a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars a year more to paint fire hydrants. We're going to end up spending close to a million dollars more than we need to, to paint fire hydrants, and you've hurt our community. What are we doing down here? I mean, so don't think that this body isn't trying, but we legislate. This is going to take a team effort between the legislative body, the administrative body, and the community. So I'm going to repeat myself so that it's clear. We passed legislation to put the city's budget online so our citizens can see what's going to happen if we take money from one area and put it in another. Because the city does have financial challenges, we've made that very clear. But it's your money. Tell us where you want to spend it. They say if you want to see where people's priorities are, look and see where they spend their money. Again, I'm just stating fact that everybody knows. We had an opiate epidemic, what happens? Does a hundred and thirty-something million dollars just for Summit County? I don't know what Akron's share is. We've had a gun problem here going back five years at least. This council tried to put something in place to help address it. This is only thirty thousand dollars, we didn't put anything behind it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Neal. Before we adjourn, just remember that Habitat for Humanity is in our conference room to sign the beloved community banner. There's a motion to adjourn, is there a second? Seeing no objections, we're adjourned.
This concludes the live broadcast of Akron City Council. Margot Summerville, President of Council, presided.